Well, good evening.
Please state your name and who you are and where you're from.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the, gosh, I don't even have the dates in front of me here, the Monday something, something in, uh, in March. What is it? The twentieth? The twentieth? Twenty-first? Twentieth? Well, welcome. And we're ready to get this started. I'll call the meeting order and we'll get going. What I want to do is I wanted to give you folks the opportunity to show a little, uh, presentation we gave at the Abisco meeting last, uh, a couple of weeks ago now, I believe it is. Just kind of goes through a little, little bit about what's going on in Watertown and, and what we're seeing. So I'm gonna get started. There are gonna be some slides on there about ice. And we're not going to spend a lot of time on the ice right at this time. But I have some other slides I want to bring up and kind of give you an idea of what's going on in the, uh, the hockey situation and the figure skating situation. And at that time, I'll bring up Steve and Marcy and they will introduce themselves and we'll kind of go and visit about how we've come up to some of the decisions that we made. So, we all good with that? Perfect. Let's get going. So we start out with Watertown Wonder. It's, it's really a secret no longer and it worked out really well when you take a look at the, uh, the Lake Area Tech, uh, Technical Institute when they won the Aspen Award. It's just absolutely amazing. So we're gonna start up here with our, our airport, up, up and away on the airport. And I will tell you, people have asked me, they said, "God, Steve, this is like your first PowerPoint ever. How did you do?" I said, "Thanks, Justin. I needed thirty-something to put this together for me." So Justin did that and it worked out really well. So ADI, our airline began operations in August of two thousand and sixteen. And if you remember as a council, I'm sure you do, we had to petition the US Department of Transportation and we saved our air service in December. Not only did we have to petition them with a letter that you guys authorized me to sign, but we had our representatives in, in Washington help us out on that also. Our passenger service continues to increase. That, uh, February was a regular, a, a record-breaking month for us. Never before have we had that many passengers in February, even when we had the Delta connection. So we were over eight hundred passengers this last February, which was really exciting. And just to give you an idea, we expect that, uh, our passengers will be about ten thousand, two hundred and eighty-three, I think is what Todd is working on right now for this, this fiscal year of the DOT, which in turn, if we do reach that number, we are going to see a, a one million dollar, uh, check for the city of Watertown to use on our airline. Uh, just a little history on that. Uh, you can take these, the, uh, the dollars that they give you, if we win it or if we get the numbers, and you can bank those and you can put those in for either, uh, equipment or, or to fix the, the building in itself. So it's pretty cool. And I'm gonna go through this. If you guys got any questions you want to ask me while we're doing it, uh, feel free to do that. Another thing that's really interesting-
Steve, actually, you wanna back up in the airport, 'cause I know, I mean, you were quoted in the paper, a couple of articles hit the paper last week about, uh, the essential air service. Do you want to comment about that?
Sure. What's happened is that in the proposed budget of President Trump right now, he has in there that they are going to eliminate the EAS service, which is about, I believe, two hundred and eighty-six million dollars is what they, they subsidize, uh, airlines for in communities such as ourself. So in that proposed budget, they, uh, President Trump is saying, "No more. We're gonna, we're gonna get rid of that." That's very common. That's very, very normal for any new administration, in fact, even, uh, an existing administration to come through and say, "We're gonna eliminate that." Thune and, and Rounds and Gnome are all on board backing the city of Watertown and backing the state of South Dakota, in fact. 'Cause you take a look, it isn't just us. It's Watertown, it's Aberdeen, it's Brookings, that all rely upon the EAS service that, uh, that supports their, their airlines. What's the question, Randy? Brookings has no airline. Imperial has no airline, right? Or Huron. You said Huron? Yeah. Huron lost theirs. I'm sorry. Yep. Well, Brookings has, does not have an airline service.
Right. And it looks like some of the other surrounding states that depend on that are jumping on board too. So I think there's a lot of support for keeping the Midwest's strength of having our air service.
They do. Absolutely. So we're excited for that. We know that it's, uh, it's a big economic benefit for Watertown. Uh, one of the things that I know that, uh, Rob is working with, with Todd out at the airport, is, um, we have a problem out there and, uh, and the problem is parking. We do not have enough spaces for people to park. That's a great problem. So we are going to, uh, probably put in some, some, uh, temporary parking just to get through. I think it's gonna be gravel parking for them, maybe for the long-term passengers. So we're excited for that. It's, it's really, really working out well. Cancellations have been extremely minimal. Uh, ninety-three percent on time or, or actually flying, that's just unheard of. And ADI has done an outstanding job for us. This one here, they moved that, uh, pool queue out of the way. We don't need that. This particular slide is talking about the East Park Edition. Now, when you take a look at that, maybe I will use this, just a little bit. This particular one that was pending in this corner, they did say, uh, just the other day that they decided not to build in two thousand and seventeen, but I think they're going to buy the lot and build in two thousand and eighteen. These here, two right through here are actually a, a firm out of Kansas that is going to be building some big strip malls and they will have national retail coming into those. They will not tell us exactly who the national retailer that they're bringing. But that's exciting. There's two, two brand-new hotels gonna build right here in Block Two. We're excited for them. I can't tell you who they are or, uh, or who the guy is that's building them. Uh, that was just part of the deal. That person has also been buying most of this particular lot with other ideas that will go in with the, the two hotels. So we're really, really pumped up for that. Then you move over here just a little bit further. That, if you, I should back up. This particular property here is what they call the Kohol. You know, when we're dealing with stuff, this is always on the Kohol. And that's the first avenue extension that comes around the corner here, through here. And then this is the new Eighth Avenue Road that we built. This particular spot right here on Twenty-Sixth Street, we're still working with both landowners. We're just waiting to get the, the ROWs, the right-aways done on it. Maybe get an H lot in there. We should get that done here just shortly. I believe I have a meeting with them coming up in, uh, when Shane, about ten days or so. Okay? We'll get that taken care of.
Steve?
Yeah?
Uh, is anything gonna change on that intersection by Hobby Lobby? Kind of an awkward deal there.
We certainly hope so. We've had discussions with Hobby Lobby, uh, coming in here because they are, there's issues of people just jumping over the top of the curbing, uh, going around and making a U-turn at the end of it. We need to do something. I think Shane has opened up discussions with Hobby Lobby to, to get that work done. Yeah. Something's gotta happen there. So then we move over. This is actually called the Morris Edition. So if you take a look, this again is the Twenty-Sixth Street right here that we're dealing with. These two lots up here in the Morris Edition have been sold. And there's, uh, some things going on there. Not really, uh, uh, at liberty to say what's going on, but it's gonna be good. I'm just telling you. They would like to build this road. I think that, uh, when you get a hold of the Morises and to the Kohol properties, they're gonna run Twenty-Sixth Street through here. This could change just a little bit. This preliminary on that particular issue. And then you got Eighth Avenue down here that was just built last year. Come up just a little bit. You got Seventh, Seventh Avenue that will tie into the, the Endress Edition. Now, I want you to just be absolutely aware that the three landowners are working really close together. And this is something that I've been working on for about three years to bring them together. And it's, uh, it's working. Any questions on the Morris property? So we do. We love it when a plan comes together. You like that? Thanks, Justin. So here's kind of the, the overall big picture of it. And you guys are very, very aware of it. Here's the Hobby Lobby site right over here to the east. Then you come to the west. This is all gonna change. You've got Eighth Avenue that comes across. The hotel's here. There's something there going on. Something happening right up here. And then Twenty-Sixth Street will slide up. Seventh Avenue will come across and connect over here with the Endress property. I did have a meeting with them today. They're excited. They got some stuff going on that, uh, they won't tell me what it is either. So I just wanna let you know, kind of on that part. It's not the only thing that's happening in town. You take a look at the New Venture Three, the Third Edition. And this here, if you, if you're aware of this, this is over here by McDonald's, out, out east by Highway, uh, or Interstate twenty-nine. If you take a look way up to the top here, here's where the new My Place is gonna go. So they've, uh, actually owned this property. I think My Place, is it on tonight? Or not My Place, but the Third Venture? Is there something talking about Third Venture tonight or not? Okay. It's gonna be coming forward, more of that for you guys. So that's kind of what's going up there by the, uh, by the McDonald's store. And there's more commercial development to come. It's a new place to call home. This is really kind of cool. You guys actually have seen a little bit of this, I believe. If you haven't, it's gone through the, the, uh, planning commission. And this will be coming forward to you shortly. If you take a look at this, this is up in the northwest side of town. Uh, J&amp;J Earthworks out of, uh, Millbank, Ortonville have been working on this. The, right here, down in the corner, this is the, uh, uh, Tree Farm. So if you're familiar with the Tree Farm is, the water tower is right here. They bought this hundred and some odd acres of land. I believe they have about three hundred and fifty plotted, or platted homes. They'll be actually looking at that and getting it drilled down to, uh, drainage issues, road issues and things like that. So that's really exciting. So there's gonna be a big, big development coming over in that side of town. Any questions on that so far? Then of course, one of the things that was so exciting, and we just had that grand opening today, you know, a twenty-million-dollar facility that is just absolutely amazing with the leisure pool, the water slide, the saunas, whirlpool, family locker. You know, I, I don't know how many times today, or the last three days, I've heard people say to me, "I don't feel like I'm in Watertown." You know, "I feel like I'm, I'm walking into some facility in Minneapolis or, or, or some other, some other big city." So we're really, really excited about that. Watertown Softball Complex. As you know, we've been working on that for a long time and it's, it's really come together. There is a, uh, there's a tournament that's gonna be happening there. I believe it's June the twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth, which will be a, a men's tournament. Softball tournament. That's gonna happen out there. If our grass is good. We have to make sure the grass is there. June the thirtieth, there'll be another tournament, which is a fast-pitch tournament, gonna be in town. Both of them will have over forty teams is what I'm, my understanding. So I wanted to take you kind of through this facility. I should've had some different pictures, but it's pretty cool to look at this. Let me take off. That is really what it looks like. And fly over the new ice facility. Now, the ice facility has had some changes done to it, so it's, uh, it's pretty cool. Let's get over here. This is kind of the new look on the ice facility, what it could look like on the outside. I did have a gentleman in today that took a pic at it and, and he says, "I don't like the green." I said, "Well, the green's just so that we can see it very well." I, I was hoping that maybe we can get Doctronics to make that into one big Doctronic sign, don't you think? And, huh? It wouldn't cost much, you know, and it's like, "Welcome to Watertown" and, huh? You gotta use your speaker for a second.
That would be a lot, Steve.
It would be awesome. That would be, I think it'd be great. But we could go out there and maybe there's a sponsor that's watching this facility and say, "You know, I would do that. I'd put about a hundred and fifty, two-hundred thousand, three-hundred thousand in on a new Doctronic sign out there." It could happen. We take a look at the, uh, the, the regular ice facility. And I'm gonna just kind of go through that. Now, we're gonna come back, you know, a little bit later after we go through it. And the folks from the, the Hockey Association and the Figure Skaters are gonna kind of walk through and how we came to, to where we're at today. So we've got two sheets. We have one, uh, championship on your right and just the practice or, or the other facility on your left there. So there's a splash park, skate park, Lions Park, and there's so much more to come. New shopping opportunities. You know, you got your Hobby Lobby there, uh, the Odyssey Eight Theaters. I don't know if you've been in it yet to walk through. It's amazing. They have, uh, the seating going in. Chris won't let me go there because she says, "I'll probably fall asleep." And I don't doubt that. And one of the things that they said when we were out there talking to the owners, they said, "Bring along a blanket 'cause your feet, you're up in the air a little bit. They get a little chilly." I'm thinking, "Oh yeah, that's, that's all I need." Vibrant uptown, you know, it's so fun to see what's happened uptown, you know, with the, the brewery companies that are working up there, the, the chocolate factories, the Harry's. It's just amazing what's going on. Here's another big deal for Watertown. The Prairie Lakes Hospital Expansion. You know, it's a forty-million-dollar facility expansion, specialty service, the cardiology, dermatology, the surgery, uh, the list goes on and on. Words that I probably shouldn't try to pronounce tonight. All lab and specialties on a one roof, world-class. Uh, Jill and I were talking about that today and it's just, uh, it's gonna be a, an amazing facility for Watertown. And what it does, it really solidifies the, the, the regional aspect of Watertown. What we're seeing, you know, where the, the medical side of it and the shopping side of Watertown, it's just becoming more and more regional. So if you go ahead and you kind of check all the boxes, you know, we have the improved jet service that's for Watertown, the new commercial developments that are coming to town and, and are, are being worked on as we speak up in Shane's office, new residential developments, new recreation opportunities, and expanding healthcare. So I'm actually very, very bullish on Watertown. I hope you are too. And I, I will tell you, I don't know if I'm supposed to be the bull or the guy on my back. Yeah, it could be one of those too. So that's the, kind of what I wanted to show you guys tonight to, uh, to share that. And I'm gonna need one of you guys to bring up that ice facility for me that we can, um... Well, I wanna go through all, is there four slides? Okay. Yeah, open them all up and put them on the bottom and then we'll go through that. And, and these guys can kind of touch base on a little bit for me. Don, can you hear all this going on?
Loud you swear.
Perfect. Perfect. So let's go ahead and, and you guys wanna come on up? I'll sit on the side. Pull up another chair, Steve. Can you hear me now? Well, thanks, guys, for being here. It's been really interesting. We've been working on the ice facility for a long time. And, uh, Steve and Marcy have been very instrumental with their organizations that have been, uh, up here at City Hall numerous times working on the plans. This is kind of, uh, just a, like I said earlier, just an upfront little design of, of what we could have the, the face of our ice look like. And then we're gonna just bounce over and... Show me any of them, Pete. I don't care. Oh, there you go. Now I know where to find them. All right. Here is the, uh, the, the two sheets of ice. We started out, uh, uh, rather weakly, I think, wouldn't you guys say, Steve, Marcy? It was kind of a tough design that we had. So if you guys wanna share some, some information on it, or I can keep rambling if you want. Depends on you. One of the things that we had, you got a pointer? Okay. Couple of the things that, that really came to mind when we were working on this thing is that we needed to get the players out onto the, onto the, the ice easier, whether they be the, uh, figure skaters or the ice, uh, hockey guys. So we got over here the, the home locker rooms. Right next to the home locker rooms, you can come right through the tunnel here, which takes them out onto the, the smaller, I shouldn't say smaller, but has less seats in this facility than the other one. Or they can take off and go on this way. This looks like a door, but it's actually not. It's a half-wall that goes into this facility. There's actually a total of, when you use the mezzanine, which is above all this, and with the seating here, a little over eighteen-hundred seats that will be available for uh, state hockey games. So we would be able to, to support those hockey teams that come here and everything. Now, I've been to numerous hockey, uh, facilities since we've been looking at this. One of the things that I have an issue with is that ventilation. Ventilation in these locker rooms and, and through this thing is just absolutely paramount in my mind. You almost gag going down there. I'm sorry, Steve, but it's kind of that way.
It has its own smell.
It's tough, I'm telling you. It's, it's crazy. But we do have, uh, restrooms down here. We have men's restrooms. We have women's restrooms. We have the concessions through here on the bottom side of it. You walk in, one of the things that, um, we're trying to do, we're gonna put it as an alternate, is to put right here, kind of like, uh, when you walk into the, the high school and you have that other ticket area, you know, it's kind of, uh, uh, glassed off. We don't really want them just walking right in. Right over here is where you have the, uh, the rental for the ice skates and such. And they'll probably have this whole thing. These two rooms, we have them marked as meeting rooms, but actually what they're going to be is, they could be meeting rooms or they can be party rooms. They'll be glassed through here so you can see into this one. So if you bring your kids and, and you have a birthday party, this is, uh, one of the rooms that can be used very well. Most of this seating here on this side is gonna be top-loaded. You can come in up on the elevator here or you can use the staircase to go up. So you'd be going up into this particular floor right through here and, and load top-down. You still can go in and load from bottom up if you would like. Both facilities are absolutely separate. In case we want to, uh, run one more months than, than the six or seven months, it could be run for nine months, ten months to that effect. That's about as long as they ever do, isn't it? About nine months?
Yeah. Um, some will go all year, but you gotta... Some places will go all year, but you have to figure out a way to pay for it. And that's, that's the biggest part in the offseason.
Right. Up here on top, this doesn't show the door on this particular one in, but there is a door there. It's kind of like Adam today when we were talking. They said, "Oh, you forgot a, a, a light switch or something." But the architect is putting in a door so we can get in and out of there. So you've got all the things in here. Here's where your Zamboni will be in. They're able to come in this way or this way. They can unload ice over here or they can go straight out this way to unload. Or they can unload the ice inside in, in this. So there's a, a mechanical room and, uh, and more storage for the facility. So let's find another one here. This is a, a picture of, of the upstairs. What we did is if, if you remember on our first, our first pictures, it had the, the bearing wall would go down actually on this side only. And what it made us do, it made us cantilever over to the other side of the facility. And it put a little more expense to cantilever over that to hold the, to hold the weight of the building on there. So what we actually did is we created a mezzanine up here with glass all the way up here and glass this way. So people can literally stand inside this mezzanine. It'll be heated with the, the, uh, heat that comes off of the equipment, kind of a throwaway heat. This'll all come through here. Now, today a gentleman was telling me, and I think it was a good idea, we have a little bathroom upstairs. And if there's gonna be a lot of folks up there, we may need to expand that and, and make that a little bit bigger, which, uh, I don't disagree with myself. Right here, if you look on the bottom side of it, that's a handicapped seating there, handicapped seating over here. So people will be able to come up the elevator, go in if they're handicapped and, and use all of that. Any questions on it so far, you guys? This one is just another little design that, uh, has kind of been kicked around. We're not really going to use it as of yet, but it's something that in the future we can, uh, one of the things that were brought up is maybe for, for operations and to help the facility, take care of some of the heating costs, some of the, some of the expenses that come with it, we can put in these suites and rent suites out. So over here, you got a lounge, a lounge area. You got a set of suites here, here. This is a, um, a concessions area right through here, so you can come in from both sides and get concessions. Another set of suites here and then another lounge area here. So there is that ability that we could do something on that mezzanine to create, to create an income coming into the facility so that we can, uh, offset those costs. That's something that we're gonna use as just another alternate at this particular time. I think that's, uh, kind of all of it that we've got right now. But I would like, like you guys to, uh, come on, baby, share just a few thoughts if you could about how, how the process has gone and, if you would.
I'm Marcy Cole. I represent the Watertown Figure Skate Club. Um, this year we have about a hundred and seventy-five kids underneath our umbrella that are involved not only in the competition side, but in our Learn to Skate program. And, um, we are excited about the new facility. We need the new facility. Um, Steve probably can echo what I'm gonna say. We fight for ice time. Not only with hockey, um, curling, the open skate for park and rec. Um, you know, we're out there Saturday, Sunday morning, five-thirty, six-thirty a.m., practicing ice. So this is really gonna be, um, with two sheets of ice is really gonna help alleviate. Um, having that many skaters, the other thing that happens is it becomes a safety concern. Um, we have a new director that came to town, Taylor Johnson, about four years ago. And she's taking our kids a lot farther than they had ever gone before. So we have girls who are out there practicing double and triple axels with maybe a ten-year-old kid, and it's a safety issue. By having additional ice, um, we can, you know, do some things with scheduling, things like that. Um, the other thing we'd like to do is we'd like to become a national test facility here in Watertown. And what that means is when you get to a certain level in figure skating, you have to go before certified judges that they fly in from all over in the U.S. into Watertown. It's usually a three-day event. And you're bringing, you know, um, we were just in one in Mini Tonka this weekend. They came from Wisconsin, South Dakota, North Dakota. They, they would come into Watertown. They're gonna be staying in the hotels. They're gonna be buying gas, eating here. You know, it's, it's great for the community. Um, the other thing we wanna do is we did a camp this year where we brought in, um, some former Olympic skaters. But we were very limited on what we could do, again, because of ice time. Again, bringing those people in here is just more revenue to the city and, um, just enhances. Steve and his guys have been great to work with. I think we've had a really good relationship between figure skate and hockey. Um, we both are out for the best benefit of our kids and we just need some ice to do that. And we are very in favor of year-round ice.
I agree a hundred percent. If we can, if we can finance the year-round ice, I'm all for that too. With a second sheet of ice, obviously we are short of ice. And we have been, we actually fight for fifteen minutes and, and and when, when she's talking about working together, if we have a time where we don't have games, um, our scheduler immediately gets a hold of their scheduler so that they can use any ice that we don't use and vice versa. So we do absolutely use every minute we can. Um, I've had some, some contacts from some people who wanna, you know, do broom ball in there. I mean, it's the, and curling this year, we, we didn't have enough time to even put the curling in this year. So we're very looking forward to, uh, to curling. The, the Figure Skating Association and the Hockey Association both, um, encourage other uses besides our own. We are absolutely not out for ourselves. Um, and what we've, what we've found is with most of these towns that are bringing in a second sheet of ice, they are getting more participants. Uh, I don't know the percentages exactly, but their, their programs have grown by leaps and bounds by putting in that second sheet of ice. And it's something that absolutely we can use. This, uh, design has evolved quite a bit from our first, the first ones we looked at. And it is, uh, with that new mezzanine construction with those, with that glass, really is gonna put us in a, a very good position. And we're gonna have one of the nicest ice facilities for what I think is a pretty fair price. I think that design was, uh, was innovative and, and it's gonna save us a bunch of money and, and really make it look absolutely nice. Uh, we were talking about the state tournament. I believe there's only three ice facilities in the state right now that can host a varsity state tournament. Uh, Sioux Falls with their new building can't. They didn't put enough seats in. Uh, right now it's Brookings, Aberdeen, and I believe Pier barely can, um, with the, with the possibility of, uh, Rush, the Rush Rink in, in, in Rapid City. So this absolutely, I, I think, in all the planning stages, I think we've gotten the most bang for the buck and squeezed every inch out of this thing that we possibly could.
And we did, just so you know, we made the home locker rooms about- And we did, just so you know, we made the home locker rooms about 6, 8 inches bigger than all the other ones. Just so the home team has that advantage. It's very nice. Any questions you got for these guys? Cause they have put in many, many hours of work on this thing, and it's been so helpful. And Marcy brings in three, four people. Steve brings in 10, 15, and it's been quite a...
Mayor, when we talk about the seating for your state tournaments and stuff, Stephen, what is the requirement now? What is it?
The seating requirement is 1,500.
The seating requirement is 1,500. There are other criteria, hotel rooms and, believe it or not, you can't have a dirt floor and chain link. I mean, there's a ton of them, but the requirement right now is 1,500.
So does the 1,800 give us enough room for as... We all know that the definition of what is acceptable changes over time. You know, we've seen that with our arena here, with the activity association and such, but... So does that give us enough room to grow, to look five, 10, 15 years down the road and know that 1,800's gonna be too little at that point?
It's hard to say, but what I can tell you is the Watertown-Brookings game was the biggest game of the state tournament a couple of weeks ago. We did a pretty good job, but I would say there was probably 1,200 people there. I don't know what they hold, but there weren't a ton of seats left. But 18 is bigger than most.
Do you know how long it's been at the 15 requirement for state level?
10 years, maybe?
10 years. What was it before that? Do you remember, Steve?
I don't know if they had one.
Okay.
It got to the point to where we were trying to squeeze state tournaments into towns that had no business doing it.
Okay. Steve, what do we have for a plan for expansion if we wanted to down the road, if we wanted to add another sheet or two to this? What's the plan? How would we do that? Can we do that with this facility? Has it been planned that way?
Couple of things that are going on right now. One of the things is that the Hockey Association is looking at a possibility, I wanna say semi-pro, semi-college, something like that, to bring a team in. I think Brookings has one, Aberdeen has one, a couple of cities in Minnesota have it. There's teams that would like to move to Watertown and bring those in. So what we've done, we actually have another whole set of plans that can tie into this particular side here, which would allow for them to have locker space. It's very difficult what they need. They need locker space. They need lockers that each individual player has for themselves. It's just a whole lot of regulations that they need. So we did include another set of plans for future development that we could use over there, Bruce, and I think that's important. One of the things that the Hockey Association would like to do right now is raise enough dollars that they could literally put another sheet of ice outside on this. This would be on the east side of our existing ice. So they'd have that third sheet outside that they could use, and it would have all the backer boards in there and everything also. Another thing, Mike, on your question, when you asked if we have enough seating, we're still talking about this area right here to slide it down to the west, to kinda fill it into this direction. Do you see what I'm saying? So what they're saying is that if we did slide it down, it could give us the ability to possibly put some seating right through here, and then you would have that kind of a netting in front of you. If you go to Brookings and you looked at their upstairs, there's that on that side of the ice. So we're kinda contemplating that. The CMAR is looking at, what's the cost of doing that also with the architect? So there is that possibility that if you have 18, all of a sudden they move us to 19, we could have another 300, 400 seats over there.
Steve, I got another quick, sorry, another quick question for you. As far as public skating, and we've talked about hockey, we've talked about, I think the curling components. The curling thing is huge. I think that's... I've had discussions with some other folks over in Minnesota. They're actually building ice arenas just for curling.
Right.
But the public skating, for the public to go in and use that, what's the plan? Is there gonna be time?
That's a great question, because right now, you know, this is gonna be run by the Park and Rec Association. Terry Kelly is kind of in charge of putting it together. And I know when Steve and Marcy were talking about 15 minutes of time, they were arguing about, it really took away, probably that 15 minutes away from the public. We have got to make sure that the public has plenty of skating time. And I think that's gotta be a requirement of this whole facility. These guys are gonna have more sheet time, more ice time, but it's gonna be really nice for the public also.
And we, as associations, we want that extra ice time for the open skate as well. That builds our programs as well, so that's important to us as well.
Maybe Jay can...
Oh, I was just gonna say, one of the things, Bruce, I know you're a curler, and we're going to put the curling paint on this particular side. We're not going to have the curling paint on this side just because it kinda takes away from the hockey.
All-American Dakota State sweeper.
Okay.
Steve, can you lay out a best guess on a timeline for this project by now?
Yeah, we were hoping that, of course, we would've had this kinda ready by February. So we're a full month behind schedule, but I think that's okay. I think we wanna do it right the first time, so we're hoping that we can get this tied up, wrapped up by the end of March now, and that the construction manager, just so you know, is actually out getting bids right now on the building itself, not the interior, but the facility itself where we're at for a cost.
I think probably the last month has helped some of the evolution of this building, and so it maybe is, like you said, a blessing in disguise that we aren't right on, you know, time. I think we are.
I'm sorry. So I guess to finish up my question then, I mean, when would this facility be ready to be used?
Well, we're hoping that we can start any of the digging or any of the groundwork in, well, it's gonna probably be more like May. It's a 10 and 11-month process on the building is what they thought it would take. So we're hoping that these people will be able to use it in the fall of '17, '18 season, more in early '18 is when they'd be looking at. But I think, isn't that how your season runs?
Yeah, our season just got over, and I think we were looking at staying in the George for one more season and maybe the beginning of the next.
Right. So we're hoping possibility to have some time in this, you know, in this next skating season, but we don't wanna push it just to get them in there. We wanna make sure it's done right.
Steve, is there a difference between how you construct this for seasonal ice versus year-round ice?
Absolutely. It's totally different, because you really need to have the setup for our ventilation and for the heating and for the cooling is totally different. If you take a look, we actually have to have, like up here on top where these doors are and these doors, we need to have that so these facilities are independent of one another. Because if you do shut the ice down on this one, it's gonna warm up and we can use it for other things. But this one here is where you would keep it. It's the smaller of the two, and you would have to have that ice on there. But it's totally independent to keep them running. Yeah. The... One of the things that we found out, and I think you guys, Randy's been very helpful on this. He's been working all the time with us on every meeting. But one of the things we found is that some of the ice facilities are having major issues with moisture inside. That's a real key for us. They actually have the old-fashioned insulation going in there, and you can poke a broom through it and it just literally drips down, and we can't have that. So they're struggling with that, that part of it. So we're trying to make sure we're doing this right. Banner and Associates, of course, are the civil engineering. Thank you, Shane. I appreciate that. So it's going very, very well, yeah.
Wasn't it the Sioux Falls facility we were talking about in Sioux Falls that day that they actually had the I-beams, or the beams, the support beams are actually starting to rust already? Or the paint's peeling off them already, and that's only a couple of year-old facility?
Right.
To piggyback off of Bruce's question, you know, nine months or seasonal to year-round, we are building this for year-round if needed, right?
Exactly. We have the capability of putting... And when they say year-round, it really isn't 12 months. They literally have to take it down to work on the refrigeration and do some maintenance work. So most of the times, year-round in this world, what I'm finding is nine to nine and a half months.
It's truly been a pleasure to work with both organizations, the hockey and the figure skating. And I mean, some people have said that we haven't put a lot of thought and time and effort into this. They've literally put in hours after hours of planning and thinking and working together, and I truly appreciate that, so.
Yeah, there's times I'll send plans back with them. I'm scared to see them come back, you know, to see what's going on, but mostly good ideas and it's going well. So if not any more questions, I'll wrap this up.
Steve, I just want one last question. That is, have we an estimate at this point in time, and I know it's early, but an estimate on operational costs for this facility and, you know, in a seasonal fashion as well as a nine-month?
Actually, the Park and Rec is putting that together now, so we know what the cost would be on the seasonal versus a year-round on the one side. That's why we literally need to look at some of those different things that we can bring dollars into, whether it be upstairs in the mezzanine that we're renting out. You know, maybe we could lease it for an entire year upstairs, you know, on the suites. People have come up to me and said that they would pay to do that. So we need to make sure that we understand the costs that are going into it. We're still looking at, hopefully, an $8.2 million facility. It's gonna be very, very close. These folks, I will tell you, have generously said that they are out fundraising right now. They have a huge dollar amount that they're working on, and it should be all good. But yeah, as far as the operation budget, we're definitely working on that. Before we actually move forward, I think you'll see those numbers.
You know, earlier you talked about in your presentation of the My Place Hotel coming in, and two other ones that you can't name of yet. We did the groundbreaking this morning of the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center. Now we're talking this. There's a lot of that, those projects that are bringing those motels to town, so... You know, they know that there's gonna be a need for motel rooms for tournaments. Not only that, the softball facility also.
Yeah. Interesting enough, Randy, when I was up at the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center, I had an opportunity to visit with Jill, and she said yesterday that she brought a potential doctor and his family through the facility, and we're in the running with this doctor versus Watertown or Rapid City. And I said, "There's just no doubt in my mind that that family's gonna look at the things that we're doing, the aggressiveness and the way that we are promoting family well-being and quality of life issues. They'll be in Watertown."
Steve, I just mentioned the fellow that you brought in this morning is a parent of his own kids and then grandkids, and he had a lot of questions that, you know, "What about this and what about that?" He was comparing it with other facilities, cause he's been all over South Dakota and Minnesota, all over. And I think by the time he'd left after you had explained the whole thing, I think he'll go out and speak to a lot of people and say, "This is really a quality facility."
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'll come swing around. Thank you guys for being here. We appreciate it. I think it's gonna be pretty cool. Like I say, we got just a few little things to do, and we'll get her covered. You gonna shut that all off for me, Pete? You gonna shut that down for me? Thanks, man. Okay, well, exciting things are happening in town, so thanks for being patient with me. So we're gonna talk about number three, discussion on a proposed ordinance, number 1707, repealing section 190417, which is two-hour downtown parking. And Justin, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I'm gonna kick back and watch.
Well, after that opening act, now that you're ready for the main event, I mean, no, I kid. This is an item that came before the city council. You'll recall it, a work session in early February. And there, there was a question about the history of this issue, which has been going on now for a number of years, trying to ascertain the status of this particular ordinance relating to downtown parking. And the decision at that time by the council was to have the Urban Renewal Board take a look at this provision once again. And the Urban Renewal Board met in early March for that purpose and for others. But in discussing this particular measure, as I pointed out in the updated request for city council action, the Urban Renewal Board recommended that the council look at repealing the entire provision of 190417. I give the bullet points there, but arguably, they all boil down to the fact that the understanding of the Urban Renewal Board, as well as, you know, a number of downtown entities, was that this provision had effectively gone away because the city had removed the two-hour downtown parking signs. And there had, as far as I could tell, there wasn't any enforcement of this particular provision since it was discussed here a couple of years back. So with that all in mind, again, the Urban Renewal Board recommended that this particular section of the revised ordinances be repealed, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding that.
Just for knowledge, that was a unanimous vote on, through the Urban Renewal, to bring that forward, so.
That is correct, Councilman.
And the Urban Renewal Board, there's three of this group that sits on that board. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilman. And the members that were there that day were Nancy Turbeck Berry, Councilwoman Manti, Councilman Tupper, and Councilman Albertson.
I'd just say that in my past stuff with Urban Renewal, it might as well be gone, cause it's unenforceable anyway. It's just too big of a hassle.
Well, that's just it, and we looked at every aspect of it. I mean, even before we originally voted a couple of years ago to repeal it, it's an enforceable ordinance.
The issue mainly got to be certain workers or people that parked in front of somebody else's place. But I called, tried to get the PD, didn't do any good. They saw, they just moved their vehicle. It really needs to get down. If there's issues with it, people just talking to each other and working it out.
Yeah, well, it's getting along with your neighbors, all of what it boils down to, and it's an unenforceable ordinance. I mean, we can... You know, there was talk about putting up customer parking only signs. Well, there you go. Define a customer, because now downtown is totally different than what it was 20 years ago. It's a multipurpose area, put it that way, so.
One thing I've just, I've brought up before, and in July I'll be done here, but I wanna follow up on it. As things go, progress downtown, I would like to have the city consider taking the off-street city parking and bring some of that available for lease, so that either a business could lease for his employees, or somebody got an apartment, they could lease some of those so that we can keep them off of the main street and give them the opportunity to lease one of those close by. And that way, all it would take is a sign that says, "Lease parking, be told if you don't belong there and have a permit for it." And I think, one, that could be a little bit of a revenue stream to help pay for fixing these parking lots, and it might alleviate some of those issues.
Yeah, totally agree with you.
As I was looking through the information, our packet, the point that caught my eye that I really liked was, I'm quoting it now from this, "These concerns about parking should be dealt with as between neighbors. Injecting the city into these disputes will only escalate tensions." And I couldn't agree more with that, and I like that philosophy that the board brought forth.
That's exactly right. And one thing I wanted to say was, you know, Rob, you took down all the signs anyhow. We really thought that that two-hour thing was gone. You know, it's just that going through the ordinance, as we find that is still there. Go through the process, clean this up.
Yeah, we did check in, you know, into the, just out of curiosity, I checked into the price of putting up customer parking only signs. I think we were looking at about, if I remember right, half an hour to put one up and about 40 bucks a piece for a sign.
It's the same thing as a two-hour, though. Who's gonna enforce it?
Yeah, it's not gonna be enforced, so why spend the money?
What if I have a rule for, and do all that stuff when there's no way that anybody's gonna be managing it anyway?
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is I looked at that, and it's like, it doesn't make any sense to spend all the money and put them up, because it's unenforceable anyhow. I think we have found that neighbors are working together a little bit better than what they were in the past. Is there still room for improvement? Absolutely. what they were in the past. Is there still room for improvement? Absolutely, so.
You know, the other thing I really wanna stay away from is re-cluttering the entire downtown area with more signs. You know, if we just keep putting sign after sign after sign on, you know, we take away from what we're trying to recreate with some historical district look to it. So I think the idea as well is, let's limit the amount of signs, especially the unenforceable ones that don't make any difference if where they're up or not. So I think that the, Justin did a great job of summarizing the five or six bullet points here as to where we came to that decision.
One thing that did come out of the urban renewal board meeting is, we talked about possibly enhancing our public parking that we do have, you know, possibly putting up a little better signage, maybe, you know, we've spent a lot of money redoing parking lots the last few years, but maybe try to beautify them a little bit more by maybe a little green space in the front or something, or some more benches. And I know we've increased the benches in the last couple of years, so.
You know, one of the things that I think that comes to mind is, we have these bicycle racks down there, but they really don't look like bicycle racks. And it's kinda like, what the heck is that thing over there? You know, it looks just like an advertisement or something. Somehow, we need to depict that it is a bicycle rack. But one thing that is going to work, and I know it's off the realm of two hour parking, but you kinda brought it up, Randy, to make things look a little nicer, a little better down there. Finally, we're gonna get that last tea alley done, aren't we? That's gonna go across, past Dugan's and to the south, and then down further, down by Redlinger Brothers. That alley will all be taken care of this year. I don't know, is the alley program going to continue on? Are there one or two more you got left, Shane, or what's the school?
Yeah, there's about another three or four that are on the downtown community's radar. Of course, that will be subject to identifying the need and funding from the council to proceed with that. But I do have at least two other alleys that have been requested that aren't in sequence now. And I know of a third one, you know, this block over here by where County Fair is and the city parking lot, is not one of those that's been requested but would need work.
And I think there is one uptown there that has still gravel. It's kind of a gravel alley. And, but you know, when we get those cleaned up down there, it's just amazing what happens in, for the uptown. They look at it and they fix their buildings up going through the alley, and it's just amazing how that goes. So I'm gonna move on. Thanks, Justin, for that. That'll work really well. Thank you.
Is this gonna be for a first reading then, at the next council meeting?
I think it's tonight. You've got first reading, don't you?
No. Mayor, this would be for our next city council meeting.
Next, okay. First reading on the next. Very good.
Okay, great.
So, okay, so number four, discussion on proposed ordinance, number 1714, amending section 10501 of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. To pick the correct statutory authority for the airport board. So give us an idea of what's going on there, will you, Justin?
Be happy to, Mayor. This provision is truly a housekeeping measure in every sense. What this is designed to do is to take the one portion of our existing ordinance that refers to state statute for the authority, the organic authority, if you will, for airport boards. It makes sure that the statute that's referenced there is the current effective statute. See, what had happened in the past was there were effectively two statutory provisions in our state code that allowed for municipal airport boards. And back here a couple of years ago, the legislature saw fit to get rid of some redundant provisions. So they got rid of one, kept the other. It just so happens that the one that they got rid of included this statute that provided the airport board with the authority to exist. So nothing changed. Like I said, you know, state found that the provision was redundant, so all the powers that existed under chapter 50-6 exist under 50-7 for the airport board. So again, straightforward housekeeping measure. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Justin on this?
Oh, and Mayor, if I could, quick plug, thanks for the Mitchell City Attorney's help in bringing this to our attention.
Very good. Number five, discussion on proposed ordinance, number 1715, amending section 190704, other revised ordinances of the city of Watertown to clarify provisions related to bicycles on sidewalks. And kinda fill us in on this, 'cause it is a little bit, I don't know.
Convoluted?
Yeah.
I think that's a fair thing to say, Mayor. This provision, I would like to think, is the very same as the previous in being a housekeeping measure. Because what effectively happened is, in 2004, I have written here 2002, but that's a mistake there. In 2004, the city council passed ordinance 04-05, in which the council repealed the substance associated with, or repealed a portion of the substance associated with section 190704. The substance that was repealed was a prohibition on the riding of bicycles on the sidewalks in the downtown area. Now, what wasn't removed at that time was a reference in the title to that substance. Specifically, if you look at the copy there, that phrase, "No riding certain areas." Also, in repealing that portion of the substance, what was left was an ending phrase that appeared to read awkwardly, "Except law enforcement officers and the performance of their duties." Now, it was clear what was intended. That ordinance phrase was adopted in 1998 to create an exception for Watertown Police Department and their bicycle force at the time, to be able to use the sidewalks to intervene or to arrest a pedestrian walking on the sidewalk. So clearly, if there was a law enforcement need, that would be accepted from this ordinance. So ultimately, after 2004, it would appear that the council's intention was for section 190704 to purely be a prohibition on the, on bicycle riders interfering with pedestrians' use of the sidewalks. In other words, giving them the right of way, so to speak. But there doesn't seem to be any kind of desire on the part of the city council from that point onward to keep any indication of the prohibition. That, like I said, the substance was called out. And so what this ordinance revision would seek to do is to just simply clarify those two aspects, make it read, make it read properly. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Just so I, I wanna be clear, you can still ride your bike on the sidewalk.
That's correct.
But you don't wanna be a jerk about it and try to run into people.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. So just let the pedestrian have the right of way on that also. Okay. Yeah, you can't ride your bike on the sidewalk anymore, Bruce. It's all over.
So is this, is this specific to bicycles, then?
It's.
And skateboards?
Skateboards as well.
Okay. Because, you know, I look at it and I go, really doesn't it, anything that is, other than a body moving up and down there, because you have rollerblades?
That's correct.
You have, and they can be bad sometimes. Some people with these little scooters that, motorized scooters for their health purposes.
That's right. Segways.
I mean, aren't we, kinda, we're talking about really all of that, aren't we? We're really not talking about just bicycles.
You know, that's a fair point, councilman. I talked to our police department to ask them if there were any other vehicles that they would want exempted, because obviously, you know, law enforcement does have segways and whatnot. That was not something that they articulated as being a concern of theirs. The ordinance, as it reads right now, would cover bicycle or skateboard as commonly defined. So as it stands right now, I would argue that it does not include other motorized vehicles, but there may be other provisions that reflect those concerns. Like when you're talking any sort of motorized vehicle, off-road, motorized scooters and the like. I can certainly check for you, councilman, but those might be covered.
If you look at what it says, it says, "Not interfere with pedestrians," right? But, and forget the motorized, maybe that was a bad example. But there are non-motorized, well, rollerblades, for example. Where do we have an ordinance that says you can or can't deal with rollerblades on our sidewalks?
Nothing specific to rollerblades.
So why are we focused on bicycles versus not interfering with pedestrians in whatever manner that is?
Sure. The reason why, councilman, is because these provisions have existed now for, oh boy, going on 70 years, thereabouts. I believe they were passed in 1942 as a full chapter, okay? And we have had provisions that restrict bicycle use in the city of Watertown since the 1890s. I think even before that. I mean, so there's been this long historical antecedent. There just hasn't been any discussion, as far as I can tell, about including rollerblades and other more modern conveyances into that discussion. So it's not that bicycles have been targeted, it's just that they've been around for a lot longer, and our laws have existed for decades, and so reflect that fact.
Well, I would venture to say that if you took rollerblades into it and said, okay, you can't be on the sidewalk, and then Rob goes out there and puts down, you know, gravel or whatever, an overlay out there, it's gonna be very difficult to.
No, and that's what I'm suggesting, Mayor. What we're doing here is, we're saying that you can ride a bike on there, right? But you gotta yield to the pedestrians.
That's correct.
Isn't that true with any of these? Why is our focus on a bike? Why wouldn't it be on any means other than foot traffic if it's allowed?
Sure.
You know, instead of fixing something that's 110 years old with, and dealing with a bike, why aren't we dealing with any non-motorized means if that's what we wanna deal with? And say, they can't be on there, or they can be on there, but...
No, absolutely. I mean, that, I can see no basis for uniquely excluding bicycle, I mean, I can, but there are obviously plenty of rationales, policy rationales, for expanding the scope of those prohibited conveyances, you know. And, but that, you know, I'm approaching this from a legal perspective as to what was intended, what reads from a legal perspective. And that's certainly your prerogative as a body to expand from a policy position what should be restricted on sidewalks.
Maybe you should, maybe you should look into it, Justin, 'cause I can see his point. If we're saying it's okay for bikes, are we then saying it's not okay for the others? So any kind of means down there, maybe you can just kinda look at that and see if there's somehow you could expand. I think that would be okay. I do want to, I do wanna touch on one here tonight that's on our council agenda, if you may. We can come back to this if we have time. But this first reading of ordinance 1713, removing chapter 713, other revised ordinances, city of Watertown dissolve the civic and recreation board and place the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center under the Parks and Rec Board. I want you to explain one more time why that's on our agenda tonight.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Mayor. The rationale for this ordinance is that state law appears to require it. The only reason why we had a separate board for the Watertown Recreation Center is because the Watertown Recreation Center was housed in the same facility as another local jurisdiction, another local governing body's operations, that being the school district. And so by virtue of there being this shared space, a separate board could be created for this joint jurisdictional interplay and work to ensure that the joint facility is properly administered. Beside that, once you get beyond that, state law is pretty clear as to, under what auspices recreational facilities generally should be, and that's under a recreational board. And in our case, per state law, we have combined our recreational board with the parks board to create the Parks and Rec Board. So now that we're getting rid of our interest in that joint use facility, there's no longer the need for two governing bodies to jointly administer a building, and that function is now wholly under a city-owned property. Now there is no legal basis for that previous, that civic and recreational board to exist. It should all be under the recreation board.
I do believe what we will be doing, just so you understand, you know, that board will be dissolved as a board as that. We probably will have a very small board, more of an advisory board towards that facility, because it is an animal of its own, and it needs help, I think, to kinda, you know, stay on top of it. So I think, I think that advisory board can bring in front of the Park and Rec Board their recommendations. So we will leave an advisory, small advisory board, but it will not be tied in with the Boys and Girls Club. Any other questions on that? That's in front of you tonight. So then I'm gonna move on. Is there any future agenda items that you guys would like to bring up?
Mayor, I've got a couple, and maybe you've already got them in your, in your schedule. I'm getting some questions. I'm not sure about you, Dan. We've kicked this round. We need to get moving on our lake park, lake parking ordinance. I think your staff has got something put together. If we can start hashing through that in the, you know, upcoming work session in the near future, I think would be, would be smart.
Where are we at on that, Shane?
We actually tend to have, again, I don't know, could be I was on that and just dropped off.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the last draft I looked at, really.
And I think the second thing is, I think tonight, the H2020 Clean and Green Committee is meeting as far as the garbage pickup for this spring. I'd like to see us get somebody from that committee before us real soon to explain what's gonna be done here in the near future, 'cause it's definitely needed.
Yeah. They usually reach out to us, so I would say they'll, they'll reach out to us if they want to come in front of the board and, and visit about that. And we've always allowed them time, whether it be in the work session or on the council agenda. And, you know, I wanted to mention, we talked about the Wellness Center and the great things that we saw on that today, the Prairie Lakes Wellness. I am remiss if, you know, the H2020 group was very instrumental on getting that going. Long before that was, there was people there that were working on getting a flat floor space, would you say, 10, 15 years ago? But it took that, that group of people, residents, to really step up and say, "City, help us out on this and get it going." So it turned out really, really well. Any other things you guys wanna mention, or we got about 20 minutes before our council meeting, if no other future agenda items?
That is, that is one thing, you know, if you go back and look at that, the people on the 2020 committee that really put that together, and, you know, I wanna thank them very much, but that goes back many genera, or I shouldn't say many generations, but many years before that. You know, it's been a vision of Watertown for a number of years, for a facility. I think the original vision was just flat floor space, and it took a lot of years. But I'd like to personally thank everybody that's ever been involved in that and put that together. And it never got dropped, never got dropped off the radar, and a lot of people had a lot of vision to see that through, so.
Mayor, if I can, I think it's important, you know, we've had a couple of events there now, and we've gotten some feedback in regards to that end of the building. And now, today, officially, the balance of the facility is opening up. And, you know, this, this building's a whole new animal for us to learn how to use and to use it in the most effective and productive manner, in the most user-friendly manner that we can. And so there's a learning curve, and we know that. We also know that there, you know, as we, we have certain limitations, and we know the building isn't going to be the answer to everything, but it goes an awful long way. We also know that there are some things yet that we need to do in regards to the refinement of its use. And the input that we've gotten back, most of that input has been very good. There certainly have been some concerns. And, Mayor, we met last week up there, and Jay was up there with us, and actually, we brought in a couple of other people to take a look at some things. So the primary concern being spectator seating, we are taking a look at that, and we're gonna be offering to you, Mayor, some options as to what we can do there, so.
Perfect, thank you. Couple other things I wanted to bring up. One thing, Justin, if you get a chance, maybe you could look at drawing up a formal resolution for the city of Watertown that not allow three Danforth brothers in one room at the same time.
I was just about to write all that, and then I got to Danforth.
The perfect storm.
Oh, my God, I just gave you a bad time. It was okay.
That's a herd.
We'll probably pass on that. One other quick thing I'd like to bring up is that I need you guys to kinda kick this around a little bit. As I'm out talking to corporations and companies that wanna give dollars to any of our facilities, I need to understand if you guys are okay. There's one of them that is, wanna give a large sum of dollars to the city of Watertown at the Wellness Center, more for operations than on reducing debt. But I want... than, than on, uh, reducing debt. But I want, I wanna make sure that if I tell these people, 'cause they wanna start getting going. They wanna get the stickers made, they wanna get them up on the walls and get going. I wanna make sure that you guys are okay, that, uh, I have some type of authorization to say, yeah, let's work on this and let's get this moving. And it's, um, it's a good deal. So, if you have objections to that, I'd like you to throw that out at me sometime tonight. But just wanna let you know that that's happening. And we're seeing a lot of it. So, at this time, any other questions? You want something, Shell?
Did you wanna talk about the skate park grants? Or did you wanna...
Oh, I do wanna talk about the skate park grant. Yeah, as you, as you know, Jay, you wanna come on up here? It's pretty cool, 'cause this is your baby. And you gotta run the skate park, too. I mean, you gotta ride a skateboard.
No, no.
Yeah. We'll have Doug there, you know, with an ambulance, and it'd be okay. Let us know, start from kinda the beginning on this, will you?
Okay. I just wanted to share that, uh, in December, you folks authorized me to apply for a grant with the Tony Hawk Foundation for the skate park project. Uh, we completed that grant and it was submitted and found out, uh, in early March here. I got a call on the phone late one Friday afternoon and found out we had made the shortlist. At that time, I didn't really know what the shortlist meant. But to share, we received an award of ten thousand dollars for, from the Tony Hawk Foundation for our skate park project.
Thanks for doing that, Jay. And then you might as well share the other one.
And we do have another grant, uh, through the Watertown Community Foundation for five thousand dollars. Plus, the, uh, stakeholders, the advocates, the skaters out there, they're out there working hard every day. It's probably not that sum of money, probably it's a hundred dollars here, twenty dollars here. But I think the advocates are over ten thousand dollars now in what they've raised for the skate park. So, it's, it's going well.
Look, they were out at the home show, educating people and had their booth and were talking about what we wanted to do. And I'll tell you what, as stakeholders, they're really putting in a lot of effort. I'm really proud of them.
Boy, they really are. I met with them again today, you know? And that's the kind of thing, you know, we can build on the Tony Hawk Foundation with that a little bit, too, now, as we go forward, as they're trying to, uh, to raise funds for the project. So, that'll be great, too. In fact, the picture that appeared in the public opinion, I've already sent that on to the Tony Hawk Foundation, so they can use that in, in their social media promotions.
And a lot of the grants and dollars that they're raising is really to make sure you get that bowl, am I correct?
That's right.
Because the dollars that we had did not allow the skate park to have the goal, or the bowl. And this will do that.
That's correct.
Perfect. Any questions, comments for Jay? It's wonderful. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So, at this time, I will adjourn this meeting. We'll be back at seven o'clock for the city council meeting. Thank you.